Please turn your cell phones completely off, even having your cell phones on vibrate will interfere with the tape recording of this proceeding. On addressing the commission, please remember to s- to state and spell your name clearly and to speak into the microphones. Um, Commissioners, I do see we have some minutes to approve.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the thirty-first meeting dated March sixth, twenty twenty-five. And the regular minutes of the thirty-fourth meeting dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the ver- the chair also votes aye. The minutes are approved. Moving into the public hearings, calling transfer application number two four dash zero four three three four from E Y Corporation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Young Mo on behalf of the E Y Corporation.
Mr. Vice.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters of support. Appugnism statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the May fifteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Vice Chair Hollinger and Commissioner Kundev prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the, in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, any comments or questions or a type of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two four dash zero four three three four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two four dash zero four three three four. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Transfer application number two four dash zero four three three four is approved. Calling agenda item number two, application number two four dash zero one zero five four from Three Peaks Brewing L L C.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Kiuch for the applicant to my right is Patrick Long, L O N G. It's one of the members of Three Peaks Brewing. And for the record, I did review the supplemental licensing investigative report by investigator Takeda. I've received that. I've also received uh the four protests, including the one individual that had two supplementals. So I've reviewed all of that. And I brought with me since that one individual complained, all of the record and proof of the mailings. So if there's any questions, I'm prepared to answer the questions.
Mr. I.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Uh, you're in receipt of the aforementioned supplemental report addressing uh uh two alleged discrepancies with respect to the mailing list and affidavit of mailing and the incorrect uh unit number, uh unit numbers. This application has received uh four protests. Uh, of those four, three coming from uh registered voters within five hundred feet of the proposed um premises, representing point two, point two seven percent of that number. Uh, the supplemental investigative report confirmed mail out to seventy you, seventy-two point five four percent of the registered voters. Uh, applicant of statutory requirements for the submission of this application. Uh, for the record, a summary of the April tenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Kind of prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so I am going to make an announcement, uh but we do have two individuals that are listed, um that they would like to, um. Say or be witnesses. So is there any one in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application other than the two that we already have? Did you sign up on the form as well or no? I have not. Okay, so we're gonna first do the people that are on the forms and then I'll open for your as well. Yeah? So um I hopefully I will not botch people's names, but I'm not very good. Russ, Rossay. Mannoza? Please come forward, sit um over here. You're gonna need to speak your name into um the. Mike, and then we do have a few. Or swearing you in.
Yep, please sit down. And could you? Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I will run a three-minute timer on each uh testifier's uh time.
So just to clarify it, everyone will have a three-minute timer to give your testimony. So please go ahead. You can let us know your testimony.
Okay, so this is my first time to attend such a hearing. It's an honor. Um, I believe it's as uh an application for a, a bar.
Yeah. And could you state your name, please?
Uh, I'm Rosa Liminoza. I'm a resident of apartment two one oh one, seventeen twenty Alamano Boulevard. Just beside the Discovery Bay. Where the supposed business is to be. Uh, located. No, my concern only is when the bar is open. I would cater to homeless people. Because uh uh I take the bus regularly. And then sometimes I work during the night, so I go home around eleven thirty. And then plenty of homeless around the vicinity of the Discovery's way. And sometimes they would be, yeah, would sleep and they are drunk. So my concern is uh would they cater to these people? Uh, I mean, uh, it's dangerous if you see these people drunk every night. Because oftentimes the homeless people would go to the A B C store to buy this little bottle. So I would see them throw the, the trash around the bus stop. But if, if such a store is located, they might have a free access to the liquor. Uh, I would, I would ask if there is some kind of a proper, a sort of a law to prevent them from overusing the bar. So they would be, the, the, the homeless would be regulated in terms of taking the. Otherwise, the people around are good. There's no problem. Only the homeless problems. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What we'll do is I think we should take um all the testifiers for. And then we'll then give um the licensee the opportunity to answer what questions or provide answers if they can in regards to some of that. I do believe though, um that there is probably no law that we as a commission could make in regards to how you would determine whether or not a buffer were a homeless person would determine if they could or could not get alcohol. I do know licensees, it is within their power to deny service or a sale to an individual that they believe is intoxicated. So again, I don't know if there would be any law or ro- rule we would be able to set for that. But we have heard your concern for the homeless and will allow the licensing to answer after. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Es- Minaldo? What do you do? Okay. The next one we have on the list, I believe, is Es Minaldo Mendo- Mendoza, Mendoza?
Inoza.
Mendoza, sorry. Please have a seat.
Please take care of everybody, sir.
State your name for the record.
I is Meraldo Minnoza.
Okay.
Okay. A resident of seventeen twenty Alamoana Boulevard, apartment two one oh one.
Okay, now she's gonna, now we're gonna swear you in. Thank you.
You swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is also my first time.
Mm-hmm.
Of attending such uh like this a public hearing. And I, and I told my boss that I have like an invitation for this uh purpose, yeah, of uh like uh a li- a liquor commission uh public hearing. So the, the only concern is uh the safety of the residents uh surrounding the vicinity. Because that's what I observe, because I work with the apartments nearby in the front and, and the side of the uh Discovery Bay. But this is uh all our concerns about safety. Because uh during the night, uh not only homeless people are uh like roaming around the, the vicinity, but there are lots of like uh thieves or like robbers or like people that are what are stealing uh uh mopeds and cars. They are drunks. Yeah, so especially during the night. So i- i- if uh it would like uh the company that is going to like uh ask for a, a license. Uh, this is my prayer that uh they could like uh uh manage to uh like protect the residents of those uh vicinity. That is only my concern, especially during the. Yeah.
So a question I would have for you, um, Mr. Mannoza. So previous, right, there was other businesses such as, I believe, Buffalo Wow Wings, a few other businesses within um Discovery Center, correct?
Yes, yes.
And so when they were operating, were you also still working with the other um condos in the area at that time as well?
Oh, no, uh, actually, my uh our uh uh time is up to us four o'clock, four thirty.
Okay.
But sometimes the company was uh like, if there's problem, they would let us check the whole the vicinity and other uh, no, uh business establishments to.
Okay.
It's sort of one.
Okay, cuz I guess what my ultimate question is, is you know, since those establishments are not running right now, right?
Yeah.
And you're concerned about the community and your, your residents that live in that area. When they were open, was it, I mean, what things were you seeing or had you seen, you know, that would possibly be coming from those businesses? Only because when we look at this situation, right? We're also looking at an area that has had those, these types of businesses before. And how do we review how it was before to what it could be now?
Uh, so far, uh, the I've observed the, this uh, this uh uh building, the Discovery uh building. Uh, there are a lot of like uh establishments that are uh serving like same, same uh business, yeah, in the course. So not only this uh.
Okay.
But uh, uh, I've observed that, uh, not all the time, that I've seen people are doing such a, a thing as the way we, 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 we uh saw, but the uh most uh residents are scared, especially during the night.
Okay.
Especially in it's like uh from, from work, yeah, so now in twelve o'clock.
Yeah, so just a little bit of history of that area with the whole Grand Lane.
Yes.
That area, okay? So that area historically from the late seventies has always had a problem with vice drugs. And in recent times, the last twenty years, more homelessness, yeah? So I think some of these problems kind of uh were there well before a lot of the liquor establishments, yeah? So sometimes what you may be seeing is uh just one of these things that has evolved over a period of time. But you know, we're familiar with Discovery Bay prior to its uh development and then the stores and the small liquor stores around that area, the small markets, yeah? So I think it's an ongoing problem and uh only hopefully that when people are alert and can notify the police to enforce the law and public drunkenness and harassment and things like that. Um, but I think that's just some of the history that I've known for that area. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions before? So thank you. Um, we're gonna have our next person um provide their testimony and then we'll allow the licensee to answer some of the questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't register either, but if you're able to open it for this next person.
Yes, yes, well, we'll let you come in with us the same thing. So the next person that was in line to you provide testimony for agenda item number two.
Please be sworn in.
You swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Nathan Maxwell Doherty, uh resident, uh five eighty Lumently Low Home Road, unit three four zero six. Um, speaking uh or uh in favor of Three Peaks Brewing. Um, uh uniquely, I uh am new to the relationship with Three Peaks Brewing and Patrick. Uh, we met at our church, Calvary Lutheran by the Sea, um in Inahaina. Um, I'm a lover of craft beer. I'm a lover of community spaces uh and bringing people together. Um, partly because of my uh religious Lutheran identity um and the history uh of craft beer and ale. Um, uh finds, uh meeting Patrick and discussing um his uh joyful endeavors and what he wants to accomplish, I think is incredible. I think would bring much writtenish richness uh and history to um not only my Lutheran identity, but, but the community uh here in Wahu as a whole. I totally understand um that there are many factors when it comes to alcohol uh 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 consuming uh things that can uh elevate people in a unique way um through my discussions with Patrick and his wife. Um, I'm confident that uh there can be, um although not assurances, there will be pursuit of uh fine business practice um and just uniqueness to what they bring to the, to the craft beer. That's it. I, I speak in support.
Any questions?
Thank you for starting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nate.
So then we'll, um, have you come forward and you'll be sworn in and you can state your name for the record. Where are you in first?
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Paul Kren. I am a resident of Discovery Bay. And I wanted to just uh testify in support of this initiative to bring the business into the building. Uh, I think it's fantastic that somebody's looking at bringing some new life into the retail area of that business. I share the concerns uh also about the homelessness in the area, but I think that bringing more traffic into the building is going to be helpful in uh bringing more visibility and more uh movement around that will serve as a deterrent to some of the folks who tend to hang out in the evenings. Uh, that particular corner that's closest to where this bar space would be uh has a McDonald's. Once the Mc- McDonald shuts down, it gets dark there as opposed to the other end where there are other businesses that are still open and you tend not to see uh gatherings as such. Uh, I'm a twenty-five-year uh retiree, well, twenty-five years of service in federal law enforcement. Um, I've always thought that public visibility and that traffic is gonna be uh the type of situation that will actually help enhance it. Uh, not to mention the fact that I'm a huge craft beer fan. Also, uh, we often walk from, in fact, we walk everywhere. We don't drive over here. Um, but we walk from the towers into Kakao and hit all of the places up and down the alleys into the various microbreweries. And I think it's fantastic that we are gonna have an opportunity that somebody wants to do something um within our building and we fully support that. And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, any questions from Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. So, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, state for the record, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to either testify either for or against application uh agenda item number two? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Kiuchi, do you have some uh remarks or questions to the concerns that were raised?
So I think to uh address the first two concerns, which are uh very legitimate. So we'll different type of operation, not your regular bar. This is a craft brewery, brewery club. Special license created uh really by Molly Brewing. And uh Patrick is very uh passionate about growing the brand. And just, if, if you're wondering what the Three Peaks is from, you know, the brewery was first started in uh Kailua. So the Three Peaks refers to Olamana. And he bought it and he has an investor and he moved it to Waikiki. But it's a very different type of demographic that goes into a craft, you know, brewery. And uh, but the concern on the safety, uh that shopping center, the fee simple interest is now owned by the Bruiser family. And I've got several clients that uh lease in that shopping center, so Josh Bruiser, who runs the uh that area for the family, he and I do have a communication pipeline. Uh, he does email me, especially with the other two tenants that he has. Uh, cuz I represent the hot pot which went into the Buffalo Wild Wing space. And just in terms of history of that space, it used to be uh once upon a time, a couple of different restaurants. And then it became Buffalo Wild Wings and for a short period of time, it was Tropics Ale House and now it's a hot bar. So it's really a restaurant. The uh only other bar in there is Tropics. Uh, Ale House and Tropics Ale House has uh been there for a while. But you know, we're, we're willing to work with the landlord in terms of security and making sure that that gets taken care of. But uh it's a little bit different type of operation. It's not your regular bar. And the focus, while the focus is really on making beer and making good beer more than anything else, I think you're gonna see a little bit different type of demographic, probably.
So I guess one co- a couple of comments I would have listening to some of the concerns of the community, right? I do believe like that end of the shopping center, McDonald's, I do believe closes at like ten o'clock.
Right.
So does your client have an idea of what time he's looking to stay open to after ten?
He can answer. Yeah, yes. So our uh, our lease allows us to stay open until two o'clock in the morning.
Okay. So I guess what I'm more kind of concerned about, right, is during the week, right? Obviously, as we look at two o'clock in the morning, that end is going to have only you open. Um, if you're gonna stay open that late on a weekday, um I would wanna at least know that you're going to have someone out there or within your establishment that'll be in charge of watching for the homeless that are gonna probably somewhat relegate to that side because now nothing is open. They're gonna be able to sleep in darkness and things like that. That'd be one thing I think I would want you to at least look into or make sure you're looking to provide. And then I also would say with the community um being there, you probably would wanna have some type of log sheet if there's community talking about issues or problems that are coming up. Um, because during the week, we know people do need to sleep for work and things like that. Weekends, Friday, Saturday, we're a little bit more like, it's a weekend, let's go and be out. But I mean, uh, that's my own opinion. Oh, um, and then I also, the other question I had wanted to ask is I know that there was some discussion about the mailer. So um I guess whatever information that you do have to be able to prove with those things, please let's make sure the administration has it as we continue and if this gets approved.
Yeah, I, I talked to the administration today. The um, the mailing was uh met for legal requirements.
Okay.
I did talk to my consultant today and that's why I got this, you know, this whole evidence that the mailing went out and made sure it was done right. Um, but this is uh, I guess I've, I've had several clients leasing there and worked with the Bruisers before. And the Bruisers, especially Josh Bruiser, is pretty, they're pretty responsive. Though if we have concerns and like you said on, on the security side, I think we can work with that. And I think all of your concerns are, I think, well justified, so we'll work with that. So. So.
So I am going to, um, the commission may go into an executive session for the following reasons, to consult on, with the board's attorney on questions and issues in a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities. I'll entertain a motion to go into an executive session for this purpose.
So moved.
Before we go into exec, I have one, two other questions.
Sorry.
So counsel, oh, and the owner, what is the seating capacity for your?
The seating capacity is going to be two hundred and fifty people.
Mm-hmm. And normally, I wouldn't see a overflow in the seating. But the other concern that was brought up in the um, some of the written testimony is that the concern about traffic. So could you elaborate on that?
Yes, actually, um, thank you for the opportunity cuz I did wanna speak a little bit too. Um, so I used to be a resident of seventeen twenty Alamoana Boulevard myself. Um, I used to live right across the street. That's how I found the space. So I'm very familiar, I'm intimately familiar with the issues of homelessness and um you know, the, the, the traffic and like the tourists and some of the crime that is around the area. I get it. I've had to deal with it. I've had stuff stolen myself. Uh. And part of what we're looking to do uh as a brewery and not a bar, it is to be something of a solid pillar of the community for people to have a common space to share. And I was a huge fan of your suggestion, uh Vice Chair Hollinger, about the um, the sort of community note sheet. That's like that is the energy that we want to bring to this area. I would still be living there if I didn't have a baby and needed a bigger, bigger place. So um. Did I answer your?
Well, just the mic. Well, the just the mic question would be, would your enterprise bring in more, uh, bring in more? People to create traffic jams and?
So specifically vehicle traffic?
Yeah.
Likely not. We do have a strong um. Following from Kailua, cause I, I purchased the uh, the business from uh Kailua based owners. So there could potentially be some small increases, but we're really looking to work off of this foot traffic. Uh, you know, we want, we want the tourists to come in to pay tax dollars to the city and the state. But we also wanna have a really good core, uh, core, core group of people from there in the community. That's right there.
So the patrons who drive, where would they park?
There, there is parking, but it's not cheap.
Yeah.
There is parking, you go behind and you make the turn and you go up, up the ramp.
There are multiple parking structures nearby in the neighborhood. There's on-street parking in Hobron, uh, there's on-street parking on the loop. Uh, there is parking available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to go into an executive session?
Second.
Or it's been moved and seconded, we're in executive session? Thank you. We're back from executive session and in executive session, we discussed um. The rules and statutes in regards to the public hearing and citing those items. Um, beyond that, if any commissioners have any other comments or a type of action?
No, no, it's good. You can make a motion to approve application number two four dash zero one zero five four?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dash zero one zero five four. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, chair also votes aye. Application number two four dash zero one zero five four is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yeah. Calling agenda item number three, application number two four dot zero one nine eight seven from Uncle Paul's Corner Store.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, Adam Miller, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, to my left is Dustin Grable, LLC manager for the applicant. Uh, we've reviewed the investigative report and have no, no comments to make on the report.
Miss Arant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April tenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Condon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, all commissioners, any comments or a type of action?
No, no. Yeah, motion to approve application number two four dash zero one nine eight seven.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two four dot zero one nine eight seven. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two four dot zero one nine eight seven is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two four dash zero two four eight two from Fusion Cafe LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, keep cute. For the applicant Fusion Cafe LLC, to my right is April Whiting Haraguchi. She is a, a member of, well, she's a Austrian director of AG Capital Partners Inc. Which is the member of Fusion Cafe. I did send a menu, cause the last time we were in preliminary hearing, I sent the menu to the investigator. I don't know if it made it to the commission. If it did not, I forecourt.
You give it to, sorry to give to us. It wasn't in there. I can pass it down if you want.
You?
Thank you. You? And then it's to you, Mr. Arant?
Yep.
Of the public hearing?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April tenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Condon prior to the public hearing.
Menu is another. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, any type of questions? One thing I would ask Mr. Kiu Chi, so um, your client for Fusion Cafe, they've already. Uh, received their health placard or safety thing, but they're gonna be going through.
They're, they're gonna be going through that. They're still waiting for the wonderful DPP to issue the bill in front of them.
Okay, got it. Cause I think with a restaurant, it comes with like a uh grease trap type of issue and everything else, correct?
But that's not the problem. We can't even get the DPP to sign up on like the sewer permit.
Okay. Uh. Okay, okay, okay.
Um, and, you know, I, I've already had one client out in Waipahu close or not even open. Because DPP, so, yeah.
Okay, I have no other comments or questions.
None, none. How, how is the food gonna be prepared?
It's right now, it's being prepared in Champ's Kitchen, which is next door, and um. Once Fusion gets its own, own uh, the permit, we'll do that. But, but this is off of Champ's Kitchen, but you can see it's a full. It's a full menu and I'm glad it made it to your attachments because investigator uh phone is pretty efficient, so. Yeah, thank you.
No other questions. Um, motion to approve application number two four dash zero two four eight two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number four, two four dot zero two four eight two. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two four dot zero two four eight two is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, application number two five dash zero zero eight one zero. Koryu LLC DBA Tonkatsu at Onolulu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leo Shimizu on behalf of Koryu LLC DBA Tonkatsu at Onolulu. That's L E O S H I M I Z U. Um, we have reviewed the investigative report and do not have anything to revise or add.
Miss Arant?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April tenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Condon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Definitely. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero eight one zero.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero eight one zero. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero zero eight one zero is approved.
I kick your question.
Calling a, a special license application, agenda item number six, application number two five dash zero two eight five two. From I Can, I Will Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Park, President, I Can, I Will Hawaii. Uh, this is in regards to the KCCN FM one hundred thirty fifth annual birthday bash happening in August twenty-second and twenty-third. At Waikai Event Lot and Everbridge. Um, it is uh going on from four P M to ten P M nightly. Uh, it's an eighteen-and-over event. There is a twenty-one-and-over section. Uh, there will be a six-to-eight-foot buffer separating the. Uh, unders to the twenty-one-and-over. Anyone twenty-one-and-over will be given a wristband uh for exclusive access. Uh, we have private security, HPD as well as medics on site, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
What's the number of security and HPD?
Thirty-six, private security and another twenty-four HPD.
Um, so if, so Waikai side, are they gonna be able to be able to leave their car if they need to?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't get towed or?
Okay, okay. And this is the second time you guys are doing it at Waikai or is this the first?
This is the first time FM one hundred is doing it at Waikai, uh, but there's been many events.
Yeah, I remember being at the stadium and at the shell. Just they moved it. I just wasn't sure if this is the first time here or that.
Yeah, I think it was stadium last week, last year.
No incidents at all.
Like, same team.
Okay, it's a, a two-day event, right?
Two-day event, correct.
How do you differentiate between the two days on wristbands?
Oh, uh, wristbands are different colors. So one night might be green, one might uh, might be red, so.
Any, any other questions or a type of action?
Yep. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero two eight five two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero two eight five two. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Application number two five dash zero two eight five two is approved.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number seven. Application number two four dash zero four one nine two from JDL Investments LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of JDL Investment LLC. On my right is your member manager, Dong Ju Ling. And there is no corrections to the investigative report.
Missioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two. Any nasor reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Uh, transfer application number two four dash zero four one nine two is approved at the preliminary hearing to go to uh public hearing.
Thank you.
You. Under uh, calling agenda item number eight, transfer application number two four dash zero one zero zero three from Rains International.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Skuhara for the applicant. Rains International USA Co. Limited, doing business as Yukaku. Appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, General Manager. Uh, we have no changes to the report. Uh, for the record, applicant has been operating with a temporary license with no issues. And this is a transfer application for the Wimbledon Mall location.
Missioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero. Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero three is approved at the preliminary hearing to go to public hearing. Calling agenda item number eight, nine, excuse me, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Kuhura for the applicant, Rains International USA Co. Limited, doing business as Gukaku. Appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, General Manager. We have no changes to the report. For the record, applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no issues, and this is a transfer application for the Copolee location.
Commissioners, any questions or a type of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Transfer application number two five dash zero one zero zero five is approved at the preliminary hearing to go to public hearing. Number, calling agenda item number ten, transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine from Rains International.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Travis Kuhura for the applicant, Rains International USA Co. Limited, doing business as Gukaku. Appearing with me is Todd Nakamura, General Manager. We have no changes to the report. Applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no issues, and this is a transfer application for the Milamani location.
Commissioners, any questions or a form of action?
Motion to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Transfer application number two five dash zero one zero one nine is approved at the preliminary hearing to go to public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling, going to request, agenda item number eleven, request number two five dash zero three zero five three from Dave and Buster's of Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Von Cook appearing on behalf of licensee Dave and Buster's FOA LLC, doing business as Dave and Buster's. We represent Dave and Buster's in this application and other licensing matters, and I wanted to update you that today we turned in the original license for safekeeping. I just turned it into the administrative staff outside. This is the old location of Dave and Buster's. The operations there have temporarily paused while they have focused on moving to Alamoana and opening up that facility. My understanding is that because they still have a lease and are working through those issues, we've temporarily paused and have turned it in, the license in for safekeeping, and are also asking for permission to renew that license in safekeeping.
So I'll say this, that, you know, as we go through, right, usually when you first do it, we're not going to ask questions, but we may be asking if next year you still have it in safekeeping. If you want to renew, we might want to know what your plans are.
Understood.
Okay, so.
So, the Wahi Street is paused?
Well, they're closed. I mean, they're closed right now. I call it paused because they still have the lease.
All right, and then the Alamoana location is?
Fully open, and my understanding is it's doing well.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because I've seen they've been having grad parties and stuff over there, and so it's fully open and running.
Yes, up and running.
Thank you.
So, I have, so if you look at the thing, right, it's so you already put it into safekeeping, right? So more, this is a request for you to be able to renew it while it's in safekeeping, correct?
Correct.
I have no other question.
How much longer is the lease for in that location?
I believe it goes on, I don't know the exact timeframe, but it goes well into the next fiscal year, which is why we're which is why we're asking for this renewal in safekeeping. Actually, some of my partners are kind of working through those issues right now.
Are there any plans to use that space for anything while you maintain that lease?
I can't speak to what the client plans to do. Right now, it is closed, and yeah, without kind of getting into the, the, what's going on with negotiations, there's, there's still some negotiations, but our client still has the lease. From the profit.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good questions. Motion to approve request number two five dash zero three zero five three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero three zero five three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request, request number two five dash zero three zero five three is approved.
Thank you.
Calling request number, I'm sorry, calling agenda item number twelve. Which is, sorry, a request from MSN Limited DBA ABC Stores.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is LaFella Romaldo, L O V E L L O R O N G A L D O. Authorized agent for MNSLTDBABC stores.
Hold on before you continue, Commissioner.
Sir Vice Chair, I'm going to recuse myself as I have a working relationship with the CEO, Paul Kusasa.
Okay, so we'll show the record that Commissioner Sakamoto has recused himself. Then we'll let you continue. Okay, please continue.
Requesting for approval to renew our liquor license for the next fiscal year, twenty twenty five.
And this license is in safekeeping, correct?
Correct.
How long has it been in safekeeping?
Since we closed as of, I believe, May first.
Of this year?
This year.
Okay, so if it continues in safekeeping, I let everybody know when it comes to these, we usually will ask next year around what your plans. Because as you keep it in safekeeping, we need to kind of have an idea.
I'm hoping we will be open by then.
Okay, no problem. Commissioners, any type, any other questions or a type of action?
No questions. Uh, motion to prove M and S Limited DBA ABC Stores number thirty-three.
Second. Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve request, agenda item number twelve from MSN Limited DBA ABC Stores number thirty-three. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Agenda item number twelve, request from MSN Limited DBA ABC Stores number thirty-three is approved. Um, can we have Commissioner Sakamoto back, please? Calling agenda item number thirteen, our request from Lay Worthy Hawaii LLC DBA, the Lay Stand Restaurant General License.
How's it going, members of the commission, Commissioners? My name is Ryan Kali Suji from Lay Worthy Hawaii. I was doing business as the Lay Stand. We have our license in safekeeping that was approved last week, and we are asking to renew while it's in safekeeping.
Just one point. I know Mr. Suji from before, but it will not hinder my ability to make an objective decisions regarding this case.
Thank you, Commissioner, yeah. So you just put it in safekeeping recently, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as I tell everybody that's in safekeeping, as it continues beyond one year, we may start asking you what your plans are, just so we have an idea what's going on in this space. Any other questions or a type of action, Commissioners? There's no number. You gotta approve the agenda item and then the name.
Okay.
Because it's just a request.
Gotcha. Motion to approve agenda item number thirteen for Lay Worthy Hawaii LLC DBA, the Lay Stand.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve, our request, agenda item number thirteen from Lay Wa- Lay Worth Hawaii LLC DBA, the Lay Stand Restaurant. Any needs or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request from agenda item number thirteen for Lay Worthy Hawaii LLC DBA, the Lay Stand Restaurant is approved. Hey, calling agenda item number fourteen, request number two five dash zero one seven seven three from Johnson Brothers of Hawaii, Inc., DBA Johnson Brothers of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Co-Chair Commissioners. Von Cook, attorney, appearing on behalf of applicant Johnson Brothers of Hawaii. Appearing with me, to my right, your left, on the far side, is Steve Kohoutek. That's K O H O U T E K, Director of Trade Development. And to my immediate right, your left, is Miles Jones, General Manager for Hawaii. Hawaii region for Johnson Brothers. If I may continue, Johnson Brothers is a well-known liquor wholesaler with operations nationwide. They've been longtime licensees here in Hawaii. My understanding is, I was just talking to my client, they've been here in Hawaii for thirty-five years, and to the best of their knowledge, zero violations. They're applying for an outside warehouse to accommodate their needs of their clients here on Oahu. They appreciate and commend the thoroughness of the commission's licensing staff and understand the concerns that they've raised regarding security and record keeping. As a general statement, we just want to reassure the commission that Johnson Brothers, with their long history and nationwide experience, understands the liquor laws and regulations and will operate in following those, those rules. We have reviewed the liquor licensing technician Isaac Lee's licensing investigator's report and have addressed the points he's raised in writing. There was a third amendment to the Five Star Agreement that was executed just yesterday that addresses the concerns raised in the report. An electronic copy was provided to the commission staff, and I provided hard copies to Missy Ry for distribution to the commissioners. And if you would just permit me, I just want to briefly address the relationship between Five Star and the licensee, because I think, wanted to just make clear what that relationship is. So licensee has contracted with Five Star Transportation, Inc. to lease warehouse space. And and to provide transportation services. So it's, it's not a buy-sell arrangement. It's, it's really a classic principal-agent relationship where they're hiring Five Star to provide the services and leasing the space from Five Star. This relationship falls squarely within the definition of licensee under HRS two eighty-one dash one, which defines licensee to include all agents, servants, and employees of the holder of a license. So under the agreement, the licensee has the exclusive legal right to occupy the portion of a proposed premises that's outlined in red. And that was inspected by technician Lee. The premises has both walls and a ten-foot fence, very secure. If you have questions regarding the security, my understanding is they also have locked gates, and there is video, I think video monitoring of the premises. No other party is permitted to occupy their portion of the premises. Five Star is only permitted to access the premises as Johnson Brothers agent. So basically, under the the principal-agent relationship, they're really acting as, as the licensee when they access the premises. So, so they do have exclusive legal right to occupy and secured. As far as the other issues raised regarding record keeping, inventory, those are addressed in in the, the third amendment to the agreement, and also in our written explanation, which we provided to the commission, but we're happy to discuss any questions you may have. We're here for you.
So, I guess I would want to have Mr. Sato come up and based off the information that's been provided, if he could give us a summary of this answers many of the questions or answered the questions that were cited in the report.
Commissioner Supervising Investigator, Daniel Sato. So we did receive from councils revised third agreement today at twelve thirty. Everything. There are some points in that that raises a little concern, and I can cover those right now. So in the third agreement, it, it lists and identifies the tariff schedule fees, which the first fee is, there's a fee per case of liquor, and it's charged at twenty-five, twenty-five cents per case from the first through the fifteenth. There's another fee that's per case of liquor for the sixteenth to the last day of the month, charge that fifteen cents per case. There's also another fee that is for the delivery of all locations on island, presumably, per case of liquor, which is at dollar seventy per case. And there's also a fee for the per pallet of liquor transfer fee, which is at fifteen dollars. There's no mentioning of any of these fees regarding the storage of liquor. However, we do note that in the third revised agreement, it does say that there's exclusive storage usage, but none of the fees are going to the storage. So it was taken out from the First Amendment, and is no longer in the Third Amendment. So that's one of the concerns, because there's set fees per case of liquor. And since that being said, there's a charge for liquor per case, which is kind of like having a, a fee for the services of liquor being sold. So if the, it's not really clear on whether or not that would qualify for outside warehouse based on a lease, which the rule requires a lease, as the fees don't even talk about storage of liquor. So that's, that's one major concern.
Shall I, shall I respond to that?
Yeah.
Bye. Thank you. First of all, regarding the last point, I appreciate that we talk about the lease, but it's not only a lease agreement, it's Rule three dash eighty-two dash forty-two point one, it's on the last page of the Licensing Investigative Report. Subsection D says, shall be accompanied by a lease or any other document showing the licensee has the exclusive right to legally occupy the proposed premises. So there is language specifically in, and I've highlighted it on the second to the last page of the attachment, and actually that, the page right before that talks about the charges. They do have the right, exclusive right to legally occupy the location at nineteen thirty Awiki Street, the premises. So that, I, I believe, meets the requirements of subsection D. As to the charges, the special tariff, which is on the third to the last page, appreciate what Inspector Sato raised. So just to clarify, there is a charge for storage. It's called inventory charges, and that's the first two items, so. So if you're looking for kind of the equivalent of a lease, again, this is an agreement that's basically a lease combined with services being provided. So if you're looking at what portion is being charged for the, the storage of goods, the lease, using the premises, it would be the first two items that say charges per case of inventory. It's just a method. It's not a buy-sell. It's, it's none of that. It's, they're providing services, and this is just a, a way of calculating the, the price. Did you?
Yeah, so I have a question. Basically, what you're stating is that the space that you're going to have and the space that you're going to have total control of, right? If you have four boxes there for the whole month, right, just four, you're going to pay twenty-five cents per box for the first fifteen days, and then fifteen cents a box for the next fifteen days. So you would pay a dollar a dollar sixty for the month for those four boxes. So you would pay a dollar, a dollar sixty for the month for those four boxes. Okay, so no, I mean, is that what it is or isn't it?
Yeah, that that is, that is correct.
So what I guess what I would wanna say or see is I think that should be somewhere in your agreement. So everybody can understand who has to look at it to know what we're doing. Because at some point, right, if you do inventory, you're gonna need to know how much you have and how much they're gonna charge you for. They're gonna need to know how much you've sold, kept, had in there and everything else versus us trying to figure out five hundred dollars, how many cases was that? Because technically, you're just gonna put a number and they're gonna give you a number versus anything else. I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean, just to be open up out there of what that cost is. These two things, that's what it costs for us to store it there and this is how we calculate it per box per month, right? Because that way, I mean, I mean, live in terms of calculation. I mean, I don't know if that'll meet their view, but I'm just saying. That's the easiest way.
Sorry, for sure. I would like to also add, under or revised statutes two eighty-one dash one, sell to sell includes to deliver or value it or in any other way than purely gratuitously. Now, we're standing up provision above, you know, there's a fee attached to a delivery of liquor. So it could be construed and I will leave it up to our council to make that determination of is that a sale of liquor? Because there's this per case of liquor.
Yeah, go ahead, answer.
I I I think that's a a pretty straightforward answer. This this per unit method is only a method of calculating the services, you know, how the services are gonna be remunerated. There's no transfer of ownership between Johnson Brothers of Hawaii and Five Star, the service provider. You know, if if you said that for transporting, if anyone gets paid for transportation, I I don't think that's that's what two eighty-one dash one refers to, what they're talking about is a sale from from the, in this case, a wholesaler to a service provider, that's clearly not happening in the agreement. And that's, and if you just look at other, all the other situations for any other wholesaler, a lot of the wholesalers have W two employees, those people are paid to transport product, but that's not a sale to those employees. Similarly, if they have pro service or some other PEO and they're paying those people by ten ninety-nine, that's not a sale in violation of two eighty-one dash one. This is the same thing. This is, this is transportation of Johnson Brothers products to their customers with someone providing the service, whether that person is an employee, a ten ninety-nine contractor or an agent, another principal agent, it's the same, that's for services being rendered to transport from A to B.
Yeah, I do that. We we may, we pay our suppliers for all the costs of goods. And our customers pay us directly upon this, upon the receipt of those goods. The contract as we built out is strictly per case basis. It has no consideration to the value of the goods themselves. So we're paying a case, so if it's whether it's a ten-dollar case or a thousand-dollar case, we're paying the same amount to our third party for storage and transportation.
There's no transfer of ownership of the alcohol, right?
No, it remains in our inventory.
And and are are just Five Star providing any billing services for you?
The only, no, they would be, we would be invoicing them or they would invoice us for the cases stored and the delivery, but that would be the only billing service.
And that is, I understand your question. Yeah, and that's that's for services, they're not invoicing.
Yeah, it would be not doing any billing for the alcohol to their.
No.
Actually, our our invoice to our customers will be our instruction to Five Star that this needs to be delivered to.
So technically, your warehousing and storage, is that it?
Five Star is providing warehouses. Well, they're providing.
I think again what his question is, so basically, I guess the question is, right, that this place that you're gonna have, right? You're just gonna have the product that you purchase, put it there, they're gonna deliver it to your guys with your invoice. So it's not gonna actually be anybody that works for Johnson Brothers delivering that product. It's somebody they're paying a third-party person to do.
Correct, which is which is common, which is common practice.
Actually, if I'm correct in my thought process.
That is correct and that would be the same as using a third-party delivery service or using a.
So like, okay, so yeah, okay, so a third-party person such as Instacart or something like that, but that, but then I'm just asking what your view is because ultimately, I don't know, I personally don't know of any other distributor, whether it be for any other spirit places on a Hawaii that use another party than themselves to distribute, right? I think. Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, right, because I think Budweiser or Odom does their own, I think the guys that are Paradise or turned into someone else do their own. I don't think too many people have an outside warehouse that they pay another company to store and then send the liquor to, but use your invoice. Besides viewing it like as an Instacart or DoorDash dot com or Grubhub or something like that. That's it. I mean, that's just my limited view of how I look at it. But I mean, sorry, but I don't know if that was your question, but.
Because it gets kind of, well, from a layperson, for me, it gets kind of convoluted when you're the distributor and you haven't, and some, now it's somebody else is doing the warehouse and storage and then you're collecting fees on the the delivery or the the movement of cases and units and pallets. So it's a little bit confusing for me and the water is kind of muddy here. Sorry, so typically, we're outside warehouses that we kind of deal with and usually if we review outside warehouses typically deal with a set space, which is exclusive to the use of the licensee to store the goods. Now, in this case, um, the the actual storage of that space is based off of no fees from what we were looking at. And the actual fees that are being charged with is with the actual delivery part. And whenever you have the delivery part, we're also seeing the the charges being on the liquor. If the liquor is a tangible item, that means there's a fee that's not being, there's a fee that's attached with the liquor, which could be constituted as a a sell or to sell. Because now the services are with the liquor itself, not the exclusive use of the space.
If I could just e- explain. So as far as an exclusive area for which the wholesaler licensee is renting, there is a space, it is fixed and it's pretty clearly in this agreement, there is a fixed piece of space. Now about the rent is based is calculated on inventory that sits there. And that's pretty clearly here. So there is, there's a space and there's a cost and amount that is paid as if you wanna call it rental or the space, that's the inventory. The other amount that's paid is for services, it's not for Five Star isn't in the business of buying alcohol from Johnson Brothers and selling it to Johnson Brothers customers. They're being paid a fee for the service of delivering, just like any other wholesaler who hires an employee, a ten ninety-nine contractor or even a third-party transportation company pays for the service of delivery. It's still being sold from the wholesaler to the customer.
Yeah, but I have a question with that then. If we're talking about an employee, you're not paying that employee by case to move an alcoholic product. You're paying them an hourly fee to do their work. If you're talking about a ten ninety-nine person, it's a contracted amount to do a job for this many hours. You're talking about a moving company, you're paying them for a kit, for a pallet that they move, not one individual box. So I think some concern of muddiness becomes where we look at this box is a product. You now are paying so much for space of that product, not a fixed amount for the space that you're you're warehousing. You're paying by how much you have there. And then you're also paying a person per product that you're sending out, which could be possibly from what we're hearing, either what is being said, a cost of that product being paid to that person to move it. It's not like, it's not like you're telling Five Star, hey, you're gonna deliver all of the cases we're paying for in this place today and you're gonna pay this amount for that whole pallet to be sent out. Not, you're basically going off of each box they're they're gonna deliver. I mean, that's the way I'm reading how you're paying them. So I think that's kind of where some of the water gets muddy for some of us as wondering, not wondering, but we get a little bit muddy in regards to the payment of that, right? Because some people could construe it to be the cost of that product being the value because you're going by the case, not by the pallet you move. So that's just my, my view of it.
If I could just address that, hopefully this will help clarify. I I believe and I'll confirm with my client if ask him to verify when they sell their product to the customer, the price is whatever the listed price is of their product and it's not affected by the cost of paying this delivery service to deliver the product. That's really something separate and it's it's a separate transaction. There's an invoice going from, from Johnson Brothers of Hawaii to their customers and that price is completely unaffected by the cost of the delivery as far as that that invoice. So as far as a sale and a kind of a title transfer, if you're looking at it legally, it's it's clear in the law that Johnson Brothers owns the property and sells it to the customer. Now, the the concern I I hear, I believe I hear, is the way that the services are being calculated for remuneration. That's, I mean, if you think about it, that's also kind of a fixed rate and it depends on how much, it's, I guess you could call it a piece rate, something similar to a piece rate where the more they deliver, the more they get paid. Not based on our, I mean, people are paid different ways, they're paid hourly if they're an employee. You have some agricultural workers who are paid piece rate in the transportation business. You know, there's, there's this fee that's calculated based on the amount that's being delivered. Hopefully, that's helpful if.
The only thing I would add to that is to your question earlier about how other organizations are operating, to my understanding, there are other operations for, say, Costco deliveries, they're using a third-party a delivery service to deliver containers to Costco. This would be, this agreement is basically specific to Costco, we'd be looking to to deliver to Costco through this delivery services. So they're taking containers to the four Costcos here on Oahu. And I believe that that is somewhat common practice within our business with other wholesalers as well.
Okay, so I guess what I would say is that if it's a common practice, have you mirrored those individuals on how you're doing it with Five Star in the payment style? Or is this payment style that Five Star wants?
Oh, no, no, that, this is, this is, uh, this would be based on our agreement versus a flat rate because they, I'm sure they would prefer a flat rate and a full container rate. However, most of the loads they're going, you know, you're talking about Costco, you're typically talking about less than full container or you're talking about one, one container plus less than two container. So we built it on a, on a per-case basis, basically to pay for the the service of of delivering two hundred cases versus four hundred cases. So we didn't, we did not build it as a flat rate, but that was, that was upon our upon our build of the the pricing to our third party.
So by share, the commission may go into an executive session for the following reasons. Pursuant to FOI revised statute section ninety-two dash four, subsection ninety-two dash five, subset A, subset four, to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities related to request number two-five dash zero-one-seven-seven-three for outside warehousing. But again, motion?
Motion to move into executive session.
It's been moved a second ago into an executive session and we are now in executive session. Hey, we are back from executive session and in executive session, we discussed the rules um pertaining to outside warehousing. The statutes that surround that. Going to open the floor to commissioners. Do you have any comments or questions or a type of action? No.
We've discussed this front and back. Uh make a motion to approve request number two five dash zero one seven seven three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero one seven seven three. Any nas or reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request number two five dash zero one seven seven three is approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling um other businesses agenda item number fifteen, request number two five dash zero three zero four nine from Keith Kiuchi on behalf of Myung Yu Kim Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh actually, I think the request is being made by the landlord, which is by the investment LLC. This is a request that we cancel the license. We previously had a licensee. In the premises that lease ended February twenty eighth, the licensee moved out. Uh March fifteenth, but the license is still active. And Byung Wee Kim Inc. is our new tenant and we'd like them to apply for liquor license.
Oh, before we go further, um commission, if if you would um. Uh indulge me uh with respect to the uh the the agenda description. Uh I would request that the agenda heading be amended to reflect that the request or is actually Miley Investment LLC. Who is the landlord as opposed to the uh applicant to be. Since we have four, we actually have that ability.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to amend the agenda um. To be changed to identify Miley Investment LLC as the requister.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to amend um the agenda, uh agenda item number fifteen. To list my the investment LLC as the requesting party. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. The agenda is amended. So then I guess we move to the regu- the request as a, as amended, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my only question for you, Mr. Kiuchi is so that the clients that were there previously, right? Your um your tenants that are there, were there previously, who had the liquor license, you have no contact with them for them to surrender it or anything like that, correct?
No, um seriously, they were represented by Na- David Minkin and the McCarston firm and David and I arranged the move out date.
Okay.
And there was no discussion about whether they were gonna hold it in safekeeping. Cause I think that's the gist of the question, right?
Yeah, I didn't wanna know if you're gonna, because normally, right? Instead of us cancelling something, we normally want other guys to turn it in. And safekeeping and everything else, right? Usually, right? We don't wanna be caught in the middle of these.
Yeah, and and he didn't express a desire to do that or not to do that frankly um.
Yeah.
It it's, it's a little bit different with, I guess, a retail license, cause there's not. Much utility of holding that in safekeeping and moving it to another site, so yeah.
Right, I have no other questions.
Motion to approve request number two five dash zero three zero four nine.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appro- to approve request number two five dash zero three zero four nine. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request number two five dash zero three zero four nine is approved. Continuing on to agenda item number sixteen, request number two five dash zero three zero two zero from Keith Kiuchi on behalf of.
Myung Hui Kim.
Myung Hui Kim, okay.
And and that's, and that agenda, um that language is correct, cause this is a request. From the applicant is gonna apply for the retail license. To apply for temporary license because technically that old license ended when the lease ended, which was February twenty eighth.
I have no other questions.
Motion to approve request number two five dash zero three zero two zero.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve request number two five dash zero three zero two zero. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Request number two five dash zero three zero two zero is approved.
I've got the first two adjudications, so.
Okay, well, we have a few other things on the agenda first. So commissioners, if I can have a type of action for agenda items seven uh. Uh sorry, moving to adoption of findings and facts, if I can have a a motion for agenda items number seventeen and eighteen?
Yes, Mr. By Share, motion to approve the adoption of the findings of fact. Conclusions of law and decisions and orders for agenda items number seventeen and eighteen.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the adoption of findings of fact, conclusions of law, decisions and orders for agenda item, items number seventeen and eighteen. Any nasal reserve and reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Adoption of. Findings of fact, usual law decision in order for agenda items seventeen and eighteen are adopted. Moving to adjudications, calling agenda item number nineteen, Champs Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant, LCV two four dash zero one zero three.
Good evening, commissioners. Catherine Nesty, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
And good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, this is Commission Keith Kiuchi for the licensee Champs Hawaii Sports Bar and Restaurant. We waive reading that the charge in our plea of no contest.
You have a motion to uh accept the plea of no contest?
Motion to accept the plea of no contest, second.
Been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest. Any na- um nasal reservations? Seeing none, chair also votes aye. A um. Sorry. A plea of no contest is accepted.
Miss Nesty, recommended fine.
Uh this is a third violation. The first violation um occurred on June thirty twenty eighteen. Uh the licensee was fined five hundred dollars. The second violation occurred on June thirty twenty twenty one. Uh the licensee was fined seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh the recommended fine for this third violation is one thousand dollars.
Mr. Kiuchi.
Um if you notice, this is fiscal year twenty two twenty three. So um normally with these types of violations, there would be the fine and the downgrade, but. My client tells me in twenty three twenty four, they met the thirty percent, cause the real, the issue is whether they meet the thirty percent that they should. For twenty four twenty five, so uh we'll accept the fine. What we don't wanna do is downgrade uh the license.
Mr. Kiuchi, I'm gonna make a comment, okay? I'm gonna state this, if your client comes back in twenty four to twenty five or twenty five to twenty six. With not meeting the requirement. You need to let them know that me personally, if I'm here sitting, I'm not going to be agreeable to maintaining their position.
Understood.
And just going with a fine, because you've had three consecutive years of it. Most of the time, we won't even look after that. I'm just stating.
No, I understand. If if you, if you look at the years, Miss Nesty wrote uh read off, so eighteen. I'm not sure what happened, but they had a lot of catering nineteen twenty twenty one that um. That was the COVID year, you know, the luau was closed, so. Um but yeah, I mean, I, I I think they'll meet it, but I understood of warning, you know, fair warning, yes.
That's my only comment.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the stated fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number nineteen. Any nasal reservations? Seeing on the chair of votes, I, the one thousand dollar fine is approved. Calling agenda on the item number twenty. Eight fifty Leeward Bowl, LCV two four dash zero zero nine two.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of Commission Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. I'm gonna request that this be continued to the next available. I talked to Mr. Akimoto. Who uh is the owner today. And he wasn't aware of the violation. If you remember, the last time this was called, I stepped in because I do work for Leeward Bowl. Um so I told him today to go back to his records and to check, so if we could continue this uh to the next available.
Miss Nesty, you okay with that?
Yes, and I'll just um escape for the record and for Mr. Kiuchi's information. Um and my understanding is that the notice of hearing um for uh. It was actually the April third twenty twenty five hearing date was served on, um it appears to be the manager, uh Nolana, N O L A. N A C buyer who uh signed as the manager.
Well, we'll get to the bottom of that. Thank you.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't oppose the continuance.
Okay, thank you, Shikiuchi. Do we need a motion? No, right? No, no. No. Do we don't need a motion?
Uh be scheduled.
Calling agenda item number twenty one, Four Seasons Resort Oahu at Koalina, LCV two five dash zero 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 one.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Ryan Hamaguchi, attorney appearing on behalf of. Licensee Cole LLC, DBA Four Seasons Resort Oahu at Koalina. Uh we rate, we'll waive reading of the charges and uh is there a uh no contest plea?
Uh move to motion to approve the plea of no contest.
Second. Before we uh move forward, are you all entering a plea for both, for number one and number two or one?
Uh bo- both number one and number two, but if you wanna take one at a time.
Can we take it together?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah. Motion to uh accept the plea of no contest or charges number one and two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a um plea of no contest for charges one and two. Any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Plea of no contest, no contest is accepted for charges one and two.
Miss Nesty.
Charge one is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. Charge two is also a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Sir Hamaguchi, any explanation?
Um yes, sir, um we've spoken with our client and um as Miss Nesty um has articulated, this is the first violation. Uh our client is taking corrective actions to correct these violations. Um there was a misunderstanding that it's kind of. Laid out in the investor's report that they thought that the managers uh that were on salary did not have to keep timesheets and and so that, but that's been addressed and corrected at this time right now. Um so uh we are um. You know, in agreement with the fine.
Make a motion to accept the fines or charges one and two or two hundred and fifty dollars each.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for charge one and two hundred and fifty dollars for charge two. But a total value of five hundred dollars for all the charges. Uh any nasal reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. Our recommended fine of five hundred dollars will be assessed for agenda item number, sorry. Twenty one.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty two. On Gone Korean Grill House, LV LCV two four dash zero one zero nine.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of Commission Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. Um similarly, I'd like to continue this to next available. I wasn't able to reach the owner, but the owner's brother is also my client. He was in my office twice this week, talked to him, talked to the brother, he said he didn't know about it. So um that's why I dismissed Nesty, you know, who was served, so I can kind of uh get to the bottom of this. Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Nesty, okay.
Yes, and I can state for the record, um, the notice of hearing that was served uh was signed by the owner, this is Jimmy Lim.
That's the owner.
Uh, this was actually the notice of hearing for the April seventeen uh twenty twenty five hearing.
Uh, that's the owner, oh, oh, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number twenty three, E A Pier, the General Store. L C V two five dash zero 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 three.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Anthony Suetsu, member of Pola Popo Partners, L L C D B A E A Pier, the General Store, uh we waive reading of the charges and uh enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a plea of no contest.
Second. So you're moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty three, any nasal reservations. Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is a gen- is entered for agenda item number twenty three.
Ms. Nesty.
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mister Swetsoo?
Suetsu, yeah, apologize.
Uh, explanation.
Well, there was a, we did receive a a warning uh in October, I think before this. After we got that, we had a meeting with our general manager and my partner. There was a miscommunication as to who was gonna get it, and each of them thought that the other was gonna get it, um so, you know. No, no one had it, and so when the investigator came back, we immediately corrected it. Uh, we're working on getting our assistant manager a card too, so that there will always be someone that has one related to it, but uh, that that's what happened.
So you got that assistant manager card?
Uh, we do, our our manager has it now, we're working on getting a section, so that if this manager you know, leaves or for whatever reason isn't there, then we have somebody.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the fine of five hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty three. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A fine of five hundred dollars will be imposed for agenda item number twenty three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty four, Ja Kai Chi Restaurant, L C V two four dash zero one one zero.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Nina Mung Kihap for the Cha Kai Chi Restaurant.
Would you like to uh waive reading of the charges?
Yes.
Okay.
The charge and no contest.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty four. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is approved for agenda item number twenty four.
Ms. Nesty, recommended uh penalty.
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
This will, ex- explanation, please.
Um, initially, Mrs. Kim, um, as the business owner, that he just believed that her CPA would handle the necessary filings in a timely manner. But unfortunately, this did not happen, leading to the citation being issued. So once aware of the violation, Mrs. Kim sought the resolution uh and also corrected the uh employer list. And also Mrs. Kim uh regressed the oversight, and now that ensures all filings are completed on time.
That, so we have everything in now?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to uh suspend the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. Make sure that this happens and inspectors go there, Ms. Wu, and uh the the filings are not completed, that we will bring back the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars and also assess the fine for the next violation, so.
I'm making sure to deliver them, Miss.
Second, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, but suspend collection of that fine until such time as if your client fails to have her records done properly again. That fine and any other fine that's so met will be imposed. Okay?
You said.
Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. The fine is, that recommendation of fine is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty five, Moani Island Bistro and Bar. L C V two five dash zero 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 two.
Uh, I will represent to the commission that I spoke with um counsel for Moani Island Bistro and Bar. And we are in agreement to continue uh this matter to the next available.
Okay.
Okay, so agenda item number twenty five, we continue to the next available. Calling agenda item number twenty six, New Green Tea, L C V two four dash zero zero nine three.
Again, good afternoon, Mister Chair members of Commission Keith Kiuchi for the licensee wavering of the charge in our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty six. Any nasal reservations. Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. No, uh plea of no contest is entered for agenda item number twenty six.
Ms. Nesty, the recommended penalty.
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Sir Kiuchi.
Um, the night that they showed up, the the commission investigators, somebody had taken all of the time cards out of the bar. There were no time cards in the bar to write the employees' uh time cards on. That has since been remedied. It was taken out by one of the eh, one of the employees, so she didn't have time cards in there that night at all. So she's since remedied the situation. Yeah. Hard to, hard to have time cards if you don't physically have time cards, so.
That, that's, that's, that's kinda bad.
I'm still trying to figure out why that employee would think they needed to move all the time cards.
I don't know. It's, it's.
That would be kinda, yeah.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to have those there when our inspectors are.
Yeah. I mean, she, she said she didn't have any time cards that night, so I said, what do you mean? Somebody took the time.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty six. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye, recommended fine of seventy five. Two hundred and fifty dollars is approved for agenda item number twenty six. Calling agenda item number twenty seven, Oyster Hallace, L C V two four dash zero one one nine.
May the record with. When Luke returning for the attorney for the attorney, what a representative for the licensee. We waive reading of the charges and to plead no contest.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty seven. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is entered for agenda item number twenty seven.
Ms. Nesty, recommended penalty.
Yes, this is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Saluk.
Oh, for the record, I can say that it will never happen again, cause the license has been transferred. So yeah, it's been transferred and someone is on a temporary license right now, so I can finally make that representation.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty seven, any nasal reservations. Seeing none, the chair also votes aye, or a fine of five hundred dollars will be assessed for agenda item number twenty seven. Calling agenda item number twenty eight, Ice Oyster Hallay, L C V two five dash zero 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 four.
Again, when Luke for the licensee, enter a plea of no contest and waive reading of the charges.
A motion to approve the plea of no contest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty eight, any nasal reservations. Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is approved.
Nesty, recommended penalty.
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Saluk.
Same explanation. They go along and hold the license.
Motion to accept the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty eight. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is assessed for agenda item number twenty eight. Calling agenda item number twenty nine, Pagoda Hotel, L C V two four dash zero one one eight.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair, members of the commission, Ms. Yorai Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Pagoda Hotel, presenting my right, Ms. Yozie Mizukami. First name Y O D I E, last name M I Z U K A M I. She's the hotel manager. At this time, you're gonna enter a plea of no contest, waive reading of the charges.
Motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest for agenda item number twenty nine. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is accepted for agenda item twenty nine.
Ms. Nesty, recommended penalty.
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Is your Uyoka?
Sounds like a very serious charge, but these circumstances were not so serious. What happened was it was a, it's just a routine investigation, wanting to see the liquor license and wanting to ask if there are any managers on duty. The employees kinda panicked, they didn't, didn't touch anybody, didn't restrain anybody, just didn't respond, kinda froze. And then what they did is they called Ms. Mizukami, and eventually, of course, being a good manager that she is, she said to let them through. Let them come behind the desk, look at the license, and of course, you know, identify themselves. But the key thing about this one is that investigators entered the property in eight twenty three P M. And by eight twenty nine, six minutes later, they entered, uh, they issued the violation. So I mean, I would think they give us more time to at least scatter, cause it wasn't any pressing health or safety issue, it was just a routine um investigation, so it's kinda tough. I thought he pulled the trigger a little quick, um, to only give us six minutes. Um, but just wanna ask for, I guess, a reduced fine or letter of reprimand. Uh, mainly because, first of all, our employees were hesitant, they weren't obstructing, or trying to prevent. We, we eventually let them through as soon as Ms. Mizukami said to do it. It was only six minutes elapsed, and we did train them. And from now on, you just gotta let them in, come behind the desk, and definitely um um answer any questions. So we can just assure you, it will not happen again, and I, and we could have, we could have contested this, but I said, hey, we take your responsibility, wanna take care of it today. And all I can tell you guys, it won't happen again, because we learned, and that in the future, we will let them come uh behind the front desk, and we will definitely identify ourselves and answer questions.
Vice Chair, is any other questions?
So, cool. So, when the investigators approached, were the employees, did they understand that these were liquor investigators?
I think, well, the investigator did identify himself, showed his badge, but I think they just froze him. His property is a little unusual, because it's a hotel license, but it has two restaurants on it, Sorbo is open before it closed now. And then Pagoda Hotel, so when they asked if there's a manager on duty, they said they didn't know how to respond, because their manager is in Sorbo and Pagoda. So they didn't, as long as you have a, the loss, as long as you have a manager on site.
But they could comprehend English, right?
Yeah, they could, but they just kinda froze, and I think, you know, they really trusted Ms. Mizukami's experience, she's been there thirty six years. And they just wanted to call her real quick, but I think, I don't know, six minutes elapsed from when they first came on the property to when they wrote the citation, probably less. I mean, the investigators weren't waiting for six minutes, they're probably waiting for three minutes, maybe four minutes. And then he just decided to issue the citation, so it's tight. I know, we wanted to take responsibility. And uh, yeah, now it won't happen again, we're gonna immediately let them through and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So any question I have is, Mr. Uyoka, is, is it possible in a way to have the license visible where they might not have to go behind the bar in future references?
Well, we always put it behind the front desk, just because.
Okay, okay, I'm just asking, only because obviously with one of those types of questions, right? An employee might be hesitant to let someone come behind. Like, the, the front desk, I, I, that's just a, a thought, idea of having something up there on the wall, even if it's behind the front desk. Where people could maybe see it as if they walked in. It's just my thought process of, cause any employee might freeze about coming behind my desk of where I check in people or anything like that.
Yeah, now, but now we know if they identify themselves, we're gonna let them, I mean, no question, hundred percent.
Given it's the first time offense, I'm gonna make a motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number twenty nine. Any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A letter of reprimand will be issued for agenda item number twenty nine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty, Pizza Mammo, L C V two five dash zero zero two zero.
Thank you. Commissioners, John Vasquez, managing partner of Pizza Mammo, uh, plead no contest. You uh waive reading of the charges?
I read them on the agenda.
Uh, motion to accept the plea of no contest.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept a plea of no contest for agenda item number thirty. Any nasal reservations. Seeing none, the chair also votes aye. A plea of no contest is entered for agenda item number thirty.
Ms. Nesty, recommended penalty.
Uh, this is a second violation, the first violation having occurred on June first twenty twenty four, and the licensee had been fined two hundred and fifty dollars for that violation. As a second violation, the recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
With any explanation or?
I do. Yeah, at the, at the initial one that was handled, um I had employees not pass the test, I had employees pass the test, but not go get the card. A whole hodgepodge of excuses and reasons. The second dime was uh the very beginning of January, and uh we employ a lot of college kids, and I literally lost a third of my staff, uh, who are all key uh holders, manager cards. So I had a ragtag team of uh people that I probably wouldn't have hired, and took uh, did what I could to just keep the doors open, um. I think on that particular day, I was going on a three days without seeing my kids, um, so I left. Gotta be honest, blue card is not a top of mind at the time. I had one person who I trusted there. And uh I left, and I think they showed up about the inspectorship ten minutes later. Um, it's our fault, or be, it's my fault for not thinking of that, but it was a, it was an oversight during the holiday season. Really short staffed, and I uh, I tried to keep hours, uh, it's not, it's not good for our business to close, um.
Are we all squared away now?
Yeah, we're good. I mean, yeah, I have, well, we've got, I have people now, it's been a, it's I'm sure you guys have heard, it's, it's tough to find good people that you trust. Um, and so I have more people now that I hired, and you know, especially my night crew, um, the ones that I do trust, I've made sure all of them have taken the class, gotten their blue cards, and I don't really foresee this being an issue, it's something that I'm you know, continuing to be on top of, and it was just a yeah, it was a, it was a tough week um for, for that, so.
You know, this is a second offense, but I will make a recommendation and a motion to reduce the fine from seven hundred fifty dollars to five hundred dollars.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to a prove a reduced fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty. Uh, any nasal reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes aye for the reduced fine of five hundred dollars. It's, and I know, reduced fine of five hundred dollars is opposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Calling agenda item number thirty one, Surf Bar, L L C, L C V two five dash zero zero one eight.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Christina Dutea, I'm the owner of Surf Bar L C. And I brought today with me, um, here, Ms. Raylana Namau, she's the schedule manager for my companies. And she can give you more details about what happened that night.
I'm sorry, can you pronounce and spell your name?
My name, Christina Dutea.
Dutea? Here. And.
Raylana Namau.
Namau?
Yeah, Namau.
Namau. Okay. Do you wanna waive, waive reading of the charges, or would you like the charges to be read?
We don't know about the charges, anything.
Okay. Yeah, yes, uh, Nesty, can you please read the charges?
Honor about January eleven twenty twenty five, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to have a duly registered manager and active charge at the licensed premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point nine eight of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
So, yeah, you could either accept the charge, deny the charge, or enter a plea of no contest. What would you like to do?
Well, this is what happened that night, but we have an explanation for.
Okay.
What happened.
If you could enter a plea in one of those three options, accept, deny, you accept the charges.
Yeah.
Make a motion to uh have acceptance of the charges.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Second, it's been moved and seconded to take a plea of acceptance of the charges for agenda item number thirty-one. Any major reservations seeing none, a plea of accepting the charges is entered. So what they're gonna do now is they're gonna do a few other things, then we'll ask you what happened, okay?
Miss Nessie, recommend the penalty?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Tetea, please, what happened?
Can Ms. Raylana talk?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so that night, there was a manager that was scheduled, but before, uh, the ship, she, like, minutes before she called out.
Well, she called up sick.
Yeah, but now that, uh, since then that happened, I have a manager and an assistant manager on duty, just in case, and they do have the cards.
Backup.
Wishers, any questions? I, I have one, Mr. Dupree?
Dutea.
Dutea, sorry, excuse me. So prior to, prior to now where you have your manager and assistant manager that had cards. What would be, what was your thought process if the person that did have a card was gonna be calling in sick?
We always had somebody in training, all the time, but by the time that person actually got the card. We were just in this situation, that she called out and we were not covered that night.
Okay, no, and I'm only asking because right now you have a manager and assistant manager. If something happens where both of them call in sick for that same night. You might want to be thinking of what you would do in that type of an emergency because. It's very important on our end for a manager to be in charge of your establishment as liquor is being served. And today's day and age, children, family, people get sick, things like that, we just want to make sure you have a thought process or a plan.
Yes, but this is for shift, so in case if they call in, both of them in the same night, we have other shifts to cover.
That's the main thing, I wanted to make sure we have an idea, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna make a recommendation. To approve the fine of five hundred dollars, but suspend that fine of five hundred dollars, uh, should this not happen again. Right, should it happen again, we will assess the five hundred and the current fine for a second violation.
Thank you.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but suspend collection of that fine. And if a second, another violation were to occur. That five hundred dollar fine and any other fine that would be assessed would be due collected, would be made to be collected. Any major reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I on that. Verbiage for your fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-two, Thomas Shiro Market Inc., L C V two-four dash zero one zero eight.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Cyrus Thomas Shiro, C Y R U S T A M E S H I R O, I'm the president of Thomas Shiro Market.
So Thomas Shiro, would you, uh, like to wait, oh?
Okay, um, I'd like to amend the charge, make a motion to amend the charge.
Okay, so since we have four commissioners, right, we are able to amend the agenda. Um, and so I would suggest, um, Miss Nessie, please make your amendment so that we can read it.
Great, okay, um, I'd like to amend the charge to state, on or about December seventeen, twenty twenty-four. In the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Retail licensee failed to have a duly registered manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises. In violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine A two. Of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
So just so we get it correct, that, that a change is going to be to the, um, sorry?
The rule violation?
Yeah. That's what it, the violation, the rule number, correct?
Correct, it, uh, should be properly identified as A subsection two.
Okay, A subsection two, okay.
Okay, so my motion is going to be, um, that we amend the agenda. To state the rule violation would be rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight dash nine A two-two. Second, it's been moved, wait, you have, you have to make a motion, oh yeah, I made the motion, yeah, so it's been seconded, all those in favor. Any major reservation in amending the rule number, signify, uh, uh, any major reservations, seeing none, the chair also votes I. We have amended the agenda to read rule two, three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine A two. Okay, so.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas Shiro, would you like to enter a plea, you can either accept?
Change, I'll say, uh, no contest.
No contest.
But with an explanation.
Okay. Motion to accept a plea of no contest?
Second, it's been moved and seconded to, um, accept the plea of no contest for agenda item number thirty-two. Any major reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I, a plea of no contest is entered for agenda item number thirty-two.
Miss Nessie, recommend the penalty?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Sir Thomas Shiro, which explanation, please?
Uh, okay, well, yeah, on December seventeenth, uh, the liquor investigator did, uh, knock on my door because we had closed at one o'clock that day. So it was about one thirty, closing up, and he, he showed his badge, so I let him in. And he said that we're in violation because my manager's. Card had expired, so I said, okay, I'll go into it, so next day, December eighteenth, I went online, took the class, passed it, I got my card, so, um. You know, I, it's my fault, I didn't, uh, be new in a long time, but, uh, I had to do it as soon as I could.
Wishers, any questions?
So, just so I'm clear, you, you are stating that you, that you had, were open until one, but had closed at that point.
We were, we were closed.
You guys were closed.
So as we were counting the cash and closing up.
They came in at that point.
No, they knocked on the door, glass door.
Okay.
So he showed his badge, so I said, I let him in, then he's, so he served the violation, so that's fine.
Okay, one A M or one P M?
Uh, P M.
Yeah.
One P M, Miss Nessie, can you kind of, can you tell us what time they showed up, man, what, what they stayed in the report?
Um, I, it appears that the arrival was at, uh, thirteen twenty-nine hours. Um, I just wanted to make one clarification though, um, just for the record, um, it appears that there was a warning that was issued. Um, for this, uh, same subsection violation on October third, twenty twenty-four, which would have been about ten weeks prior to the violation actually being issued.
Did you accept, did you get that first warning?
Yes, well, the other manager got it, and then he told me about it. So when the processing, we better take the test and unfortunately, him and people were able to go and take the test.
Yeah, it's like ten week, ten weeks ago, ten week difference?
About, about approximately ten weeks, correct?
And we need to have the manager card filed. I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, who the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of five hundred dollars. Any major reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I. Um, a recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved for agenda item number thirty-two. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, ten, ten key. I'm sorry, Tenki Chi, L C V, ten chi chi, got it. And itchy, sorry, excuse me, L C V two-five dash zero zero one nine.
My name is, um, Eileen Niada, I am their agent for Sunrise Inc. And this is B B A Tenki Chi, they have another restaurant as well. Um, as far as this charge is concerned, there's no contest.
Yeah, which, waive reading of the charges?
Hold on, show us something, I think.
Sir, Commissioner, if I can amend, uh, the charge to correct the date, the year.
Please.
I, if I may make a motion to do so.
Go ahead.
Uh, what I'd like to correct the charge to state is, on or about November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. Licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person then employed on the licensed premises. Who's registered with the commission or who is subject to registration on the date and in such manner as directed by the commission. In violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point eight of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Wait, Miss, no, hold on, because the agenda itself, Miss Nessie, so you're basically stating that the, the violation date was November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four?
Correct, and our notice of hearing actually, um, identifies the wrong year as twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I get that, but I don't know, okay, so. Ms. Harai, our. What is Jeff?
Jeff, Jeff Cam?
Jeff, question I guess is, the agenda itself that's posted has the correct violation date listed in the. Document on page ten, but I don't, I guess her meeting noted or the, yeah, notice of hearing has the wrong date. So we still would have, we would be able to change the hearing notice as well, or is it just the agenda? Sure, sure, ah, because I've never, I mean, the agenda itself says the.
And the notice of hearing.
Actually, in the past, sometimes the, uh, the licensee has graciously, uh, waived objection to correcting the, the notice of hearing if it's something that's. Relatively inconsequential, not that I'm suggesting that you do that, but that has actually occurred in the past.
See, how, how would you like to proceed?
I don't know, I mean, I, I didn't even notice about the date too, on the hearing, I mean, November twenty twenty-five is not here yet, so. But I assumed it was for twenty twenty-four and the hearing was today.
If the licensee of, has an objection to proceeding forward with the way that the notice of hearing was issued as twenty twenty-five. We could reissue the notice of hearing with the correct date, but then we'd have to continue the matter and then she would have to come back to address the, the matter.
Would you like us to correct it and come back, or would you like to, another option is to waive?
Yeah.
Uh.
Yes, I will waive it.
Okay, so then we won't need to correct because she's waived the, the, the notice.
She is not raising an objection that her notice of hearing had an incorrect date on it, twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-four.
Okay, okay, thank you, so.
Thank you.
Now, I believe we can ask it, your plea, so you had originally said no contest?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to accept a plea of no contest?
Second, it's been moved and seconded to approve a plea of no contest for agenda item number thirty-three. Any major reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I, a plea of no contest is accepted for agenda item number thirty-three. We'll do a few more things and then you'll get to give an explanation.
Snessi?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yara, any explanation?
Um, it's really crazy, but the, the annual report was turned into the office and we had. Toriton, which is another restaurant that Sunrise has, we turned that in and for some reason, instead of putting it in, they put it in, uh. Where the filing things were, so the part-timer came in and thought it was done, so put it in a file and it was put away. Until they were served, we didn't realize that no one sent it out. So we sent it out right away, you know, at that time, but which was already late.
So we have it on file now then?
Yes, yes.
How long afterwards did you send it out?
Um, right after the, uh, I guess the. What do you call that, the person came in and served at the restaurant, so they let me know the next day. That it wasn't turned in, so we turned it in, so I, I have no, um, recollection as to when the citation was made. At the, uh, restaurant, but we turned it in the day after.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to. Prove the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, but suspend collection of the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, given a first time offense. Should, uh, this happen again, Miss Yara, we'll have to assess the two fifty plus, uh, the fine for the additional offense.
Second, been moved and seconded to approve a recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, but suspend collection of that two hundred and fifty dollars. But if there is an additional violation of the same, that two hundred and fifty dollars and any other fine that would be assessed would become collectible. Any major reservations seeing none, the chair also votes I, the verbiage is what that would be for your fine.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-four, the turn at Stella's Restaurant and Bar, L C V two-four dash zero one zero zero.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Mark Koata, the attorney for. The licensee to my right is the managing member of the L C. And her name is for the record, Niu N I U, last name Fakava, H F A K A V A.
Water, would you like to waive reading?
First, uh, I have actually talked to Ms. Nestle prior to the hearing, uh, she wants to amend, make some amendments to which I've stipulated.
Snessi?
Uh, I'm sorry, so I'd like to move to amend, uh, the charge, it's incorrectly reflected on both the agenda and the notice of hearing. Um, so if I can just correct the dates, the dates were transposed, um, uh, charge one should, uh, correctly read. Honored during the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to property. Excuse me, or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point fifty-six of the rules. Of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. And then count two should correctly state, on or about July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And or from the period from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through and including June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. In the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing. About a managing or operating agreement between licensee and Malka Warriors LLC. Prior to such agreement taking effect in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash forty-one point four. Of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
So similar situation like last time, we can.
So we, the agenda needs to be changed for.
So you have to vote on that.
Yeah, so the agenda part got to be done first and then the hearing part we have to determine after, right?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to reflect the corrective, correct dates for charge one being June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And for charge two being July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, wait, is it, I thought, was it supposed to be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four? Yes, okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Want to make sure before.
Motion to approve, change, amendment to the agenda for charge one to reflect. June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and charge number two being July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for agenda item number thirty-four from charge one. To change the date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and charge two to change the violation date to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Any major reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes I, the agenda is amended as read. Then we have, do we have to deal with the process, the hearing notice of hearing, right?
And would you like?
Wave objection.
Okay, all right. So it's on you to, if you would like to waive reading of the charge or have the charges read.
A licensee waives reading of the charge, uh, will enter a plea of not guilty and I, I want to explain to the commission that. I'm not, we don't want to hold up the process anymore, this case was continued once. Somebody stood in for me and I apologize to the commission that being in two jury trials, back to back, six weeks. I haven't been able to even talk to this fucker until today, right prior to the hearing. Uh, the reason I'd like to get the. Uh, plead not guilty is I'll get the discovery, then I'll be able to figure out what this is all about. And we have already talked about potential resolutions and we'll be working towards that. Now, the one thing I'd like to ask for is I, I have, the summer trial schedule's not good, we have one in July. One in August, in fact, one in June, so if I could. I'm not sure how you handle that, that case.
So we first, we have to, first, we have to make the motions for the two charges of your stating not guilty. And then we have some verbiage we have to read to you, unless you waive that, but then we'll get through that. And then you guys can work together on continuing dates to do that.
Sounds good, thank you.
So.
Motion to accept a plea for charges one and charge two of not guilty.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to enter a plea of not guilty for charge one and not guilty for charge two. Any major reservations? Seeing none, the chair also votes I, a plea will be accepted for charge one of not guilty and charge two not guilty. You want to read the thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so first thing, I'm really bad with your last name, I'm so sorry.
Water.
Water, Mr. Koata, there is a reading that I can read or do you waive reading of that?
I'll waive it.
Okay, I've, I've tried cases here, it's been a while. So with that, we would. So with that, we would then um move that this would be rescheduled to a contested hearing. That the the two parties can work out with um counsel to determine the dates. Or how they would proceed to deal with the settlement or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, number third, agenda item number three, liquor administrator. Initiative matters.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you.
We're rolling soon. I know, there's gonna be no food for me.
We'll get it from there, thanks for staying.
Good evening, Commissioners, Subteles Administrator, Honolulu Commission. Uh first of all, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Kandis to the function.
Thank you.
Uh and uh just just add that if he has any questions whatsoever about our operations or what we do. If please feel free to contact either myself or any of the staff. Uh so that he can, he can get uh information about the about the agency.
Thank you, I will.
Hey, um I think of of note for us is that we've re we've uh re-engaged with H G A. To uh deal with policies and procedures that are essential to us. Uh meeting recommendations of downloading the system review, but also aspects of the settlement agreement with uh Scarlet Home Wheeling. We're hoping that we can get those items across the board, but I think uh I think uh everybody knows that for us. The the items that that are that are really important for us, well, all of them are. Uh first of all, uh um the uniform policy, uh body worn cameras. Uh routine inspections, uh geolocation history data. Uh additionally, uh L G P T Q plus mandatory training. And also even the 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 panoply of of policies that affect the the enforcement section. Because one of the recommendations, one of the system review recommendations was that we reviewed that and we updated that. And and hopefully we'll be able to get those across the boards soon. You know, uh and and with with regard to those items as well, uh you all know that we are in the process of. Moving forward on 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 I T improvements and I just want to let you know that uh. You know, uh the the team has been meeting weekly with with the with uh with our vendor. And Commissioner Hollinger, I know you're part of the technology permitted interaction group. And I think uh it would be helpful to you for you to understand what's going on or what 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 options we may have as we move forward. Uh to get in touch with uh our staff like uh Doug O and 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 Howard Chu. Um I think that that that's really important and finally, I think also that uh we continue trying to recruit for uh liquor control investigators. Um we have three viable candidates, I think that were uh fun to be going next. I wish you, I you know, the the the, I think the the surprising thing to me, as I've I've sat here for almost two years, fact that. Uh we always get candidates uh uh for L C I ones. Uh I just wish you could get uh, you could get candidates for other positions as well. Uh because it's 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 been, it's it's been difficult to to re- to replace people that who have moved from from the agency. Um and but that's something that that we need to do on uh on a on a on a constant basis that we need to be on like uh for. For for um people who would like to work with us and and if we're in the positions that we have available. Uh and with that, I'm over to any questions you have.
I have no questions.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh moving to agenda item number thirty six, Liquor Commission announcements. One announcement I would have is welcome Commissioner Kandis, welcome to the group of, as we continue to move forward. We finally have five, which would be will be nice when there might be hardships of not everybody here.
Honor to be a part of the team, thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements beyond that?